Tell me.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Charter Revision Commission for Wednesday, October 26, 2022. I'd like to go around and have everyone introduce themselves, please, for the record. Rick McQuaid, I'm the vice chairman.
Michael, both member of the commission.
Ed Camacho, Board of Estimate and Taxation.
Diana Carpio, Vice Chair of the Board of Ed.
Troy Jeller at Board of Estimate Taxation.
Board of Education.
Sergeant, Tyler Faber, member of the Charter Revision Commission.
Call to Houston, Board of Education.
Sheri McPhee Brown, Board of Education.
I don't think we got God, Godfrey.
Godfrey Seema, Board of Education, Board Secretary. Sorry about that.
Hello, everyone. Did we get everyone? Yeah, I think that's what I see on the screen. Okay, I'd like to approve the minutes of the October 12, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion?
A motion. Did we approve them? I had no questions.
Second.
Second, Michael. All right. All in favor?
I.
I. Okay, all right, let's get right into what we're here for tonight. This is a meeting with the elected and appointed officials for a public hearing to listen for any public that may have comments for this evening. So Larry, do we have anyone? Or I'm sorry, Jordan? Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Levin. I live at 249 Chestnut Hill Road in Norwalk. Hi, cut me off if it gets really boring. So I've been attending these meetings of the Charter Revision Commission. And I'm quite impressed. Charter reform is really quite a heavy lift, or it can be. It's done rarely. It appears to be approximately every hundred years or so. So I guess if you do it that infrequently, it's probably worth doing well. But you all know this.
Can everybody mute themselves that's on the Zoom call?
From attending these meetings, it's also eminently clear that this town and this commission and our and this process are in incredibly good hands. Attorney Stephen Mednick appears to be profoundly qualified and experienced and will be just phenomenal. His knowledge, experience, wisdom, and communication skills are going to see this thing through. And I think we're in exceptionally good hands. So I think very little could go wrong. My comments tonight are going to include some very serious recommendations. And also some other recommendations that people might consider to be slightly less serious, but I still think should be taken seriously. On the serious side, Norwalk's new charter should make improvements to the police commission structure. Specifically, I believe the police commission should be expanded to five members from the current three, with two of those members appointed by majority vote of the council without input from the mayor or without any formal input or nomination from the mayor. Also, the terms of commissioners should be staggered. Now, on the less serious side, charter reform in Norwalk seems to happen so infrequently. You know, you sort of wonder, look back a hundred years and you would think, you know, we would now think, what were they thinking in 1913 when they wrote this charter? Well, now it's time for us to look forward to probably the year 2131, when this charter will be revised again. And they will look back to this commission in 2022 and 2023 and see what work it did. And I think that we should provide them some pleasant surprises and maybe even some Easter eggs and golden nuggets. I think we should have fun. In all seriousness, there is no rule that says that the Charter of Norwalk has to be a profoundly boring document that no one gives a shit about because it's just all legalese. So here's what I would recommend. Oh, my God. Okay, so here's what the charter needs. I think we should have a royal family. This can be an appointed position. Okay, and obviously non-paying. None of these would be paid positions because, you know, they're not going to do anything. What would the royal family do? I don't know. Whatever they do in England, you know, I guess, you know, scandals and things like that. I think we should have a town crier. This would be somebody who, again, not paid, but gets to stand on the town green and, you know, read things or something like that.
They're called town clerks.
I think we should have, well, actually, somebody else recommended to me, and I think it's a good idea, an arbiter of stupid shit. It's kind of like an ombudsman position. So the arbiter of stupid shit, otherwise known as the ass, would be responsible for dealing with, you know, all the nonsense. We should have a contrail inspector. And not all of these would be required, but I think they would be good to have, not paid positions. And it's not going to cost the taxpayers any money, but I think it might help get Norwalk on the map. We in Norwalk should have a soothsayer, that is, somebody who is appointed to predict the future and tell us what will happen in the future. Ah, goddammit. Okay.
Any more, John?
All right. The next, we also should have a dungeon master. How cool would it be if Norwalk had a dungeon master? Also, we should have an air raid warden, because, I mean, you never know. We should have a cat whisperer, an exorcist, a hoarding consultant. And last, but not least, we should have a village idiot. I volunteer. You know, again, unpaid positions, but Attorney Mednick, I think, you know, there's ample room to, you know, put some nice little Easter eggs and entertainment into this otherwise somewhat droll process.
Thank you. John, I will let you know that in 1972, 73 at North High School, we decided to go to a royal family type student government. And I will tell you someday off the record how well that went. But as you say, entertaining, it was very entertaining. So.
Exactly. Exactly. What could go wrong?
Yeah, it did.
Well, I've done over thirty charters, Mr. Vice Chair, and I have to say this is the most unique and interesting testimony I've ever heard in a charter.
I would certainly, for the record, Attorney Mednick, that we also, you know, start drafting some of those and.
I took notes, very copious notes on that.
Be very focused. Thank you. John, thank you.
I did try to submit these in writing. The link for the commission website, I couldn't find it. I know that at the last meeting, we said that there would be a link available.
We'll have Jordan look into that.
Great. Okay, Jordan, is there another speaker?
Yeah.
Oh, hello, Tom.
Hello. Good evening, for the record.
It's tough doing a Zoom meeting and not being able to see the room and who's there, so.
I know. And Rick, by the way, I'm assuming you were the king in your high school?
I was the jester.
Okay, for the record, Tom Livingston, 23 Crockett Street, President of the Common Council, as I think you all know. I want to once again thank you all for agreeing to serve on this commission. I know it's a huge demand on you and your families. So thank you very much for that. You're going to hear a lot of different comments from people tonight and throughout your meetings. I want to just, if I could, just give a couple of broad thoughts that I would like to share about the process as I see it and just where I think would be helpful to go. As I've said before, and as you know, the charter was adopted in 1913, and many of the articles remain as originally written. That and the fact that the city has evolved over the last 110 years to become a modern, vibrant city that it is today has resulted in provisions that are no longer applicable to city operations and render the charter unwieldy and difficult for citizens to understand. And I think that leads me to what I think has always been our, oh, he's a patsy. I'll give you a second. You must have more entertaining comments, but. So just because of the fact that it is so unwieldy, it doesn't reflect current operations. I think that the cleanup and modernizations have to be job one, job two, and job three. If you do nothing else than that, I think this will be a big success. There is so much that needs to be done, but those are the most important parts. Those are the things that people need to see every day. So the charter needs to mirror the current structure and operation of the city, yet be flexible enough to adapt to changing times and circumstances, including changes that we probably can't even anticipate now. So as you review the charter, I think it'd be useful to ask yourselves that, you know, something may have made sense 10 years, 50 years ago. Does it make sense today? Will it make sense 10 years from now or 50 years from now? If the answer is no, then I take it out of the charter. Is it more suitable to be in an ordinance, for example, where it could be, something could be adjusted more readily that way? And this is an example, if there are dollar thresholds in the charter, I mean, they're almost by definition going to be dated, right? So I think if you see those, I think you have to ask yourselves whether those are appropriate to be in the charter, whatever the subject may be. And in terms of specifics, I think you should look at the budget and approval, financial approval process to make sure that the methods we use now are the most efficient and promote the efficient and proper use of our city funds. And I think make sure we, sorry, the most efficient administration of our finances. I also think you should look at extraneous positions in the charter as well as references to specific provisions, specific positions to see if they're even needed right now. Some of them, as you may know, are barely used. They just appear in the charter and the last charter revision commission. Try to get rid of some of those. I think you should look at those again. And there are also provisions there that deal with current officer positions, if you will, that may or may not be appropriate for the charter document. They may be more appropriate in an ordinance. So again, I ask you to look at that. So as I said before, you're going to receive comments from many people, and you're not going to be able to address each and every one, of course. But as you do, as you consider them, I urge you to keep in mind what I've called job one, two, and three, is to just focus on the most immediate prize, which is to make the charter something that is accessible, understandable, and modern enough for our city residents and for the future. And that just brings me to my final point. As Mr. Levin pointed out, this hasn't been done. Well, it's been done a little bit over the last 100 and 10 years. It's long overdue, and we can't wait another 110 years. We have to build in a mechanism that provides for the periodic review and formation of charter commissions, so we don't find ourselves in the same position in 110 years. So again, thank you very much for your time, and very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. One thing I didn't add before, and hello, Patsy, it's all yours in a second. The mayor cannot be with us tonight. He was a little under the weather. He will provide testimony at our next meeting. So we hope he's feeling better soon. So with that, Patsy, I'm going to turn it over to you as king of the charter revision. I'm going to turn it over to you and go from here.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
And I apologize to everybody. I totally misunderstood that it changed it to the starting time to 6:30. Have you done, did you do the minutes and? Okay, and I had a correction on the minutes that Angela Wasuna was, was that correction made or not?
We did not have that, but we can add that.
Okay, because she's listed under others rather than as a commissioner?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so is there someone else that is ready to address us from the council or the city? Barbara Smith.
Yes, good evening. Barbara Smith for Brook Hill Lane. I am the Common Council Majority Leader. And I would like to start by thanking you so much, all of you, for serving on this commission. It is a lot of work, and I appreciate so much your service and efforts because they are quite huge. I would like to say I concur with everything our council president, Mr. Livingston, had to say. I think that this charter is so antiquated back in 1913. It has us looking backwards as opposed to forward. We're kind of stuck in the 19th century versus the 21st. And so I think that everything Mr. Livingston has recommended, I absolutely concur. We've got to bring it up to date. And I don't think I need to, you know, focus so much on that. I do have two things that I would like to contribute additionally. One is that I would like to see some reasonable compensation for elected officials on the common council. I do believe Board of Education members deserve some compensation as well. Common council members currently receive a very, very minuscule stipend that is almost laughable, frankly. It's a lot of work, and I think that a lot of you are aware of this because you have served in many positions. It's a lot of work. Many, many hours are put in. And I think one thing in terms of compensation is that it would allow for more diversity of people to run for office. It would allow for people who have young children, who have, you know, childcare expenses and different people who just, you know, they're struggling with their jobs and trying to make things happen in so many ways. So I think some reasonable compensation for council members and Board of Education members is something I'd like to see. And then second, just a little more specific in terms of, you know, some of the things that keep us from moving forward as a city is I would like you to look at some of, you know, because there are actual, you know, job requirements for job descriptions for city staff that I think keep us thinking backwards as opposed to forward. And I don't want to, you know, mention anything specifically, but I would like you to look at that language. Other than that, I think that much that needs to be done is not for this first round. I think that we have, there are some, some big matters that need to be tackled, and I see this as an ongoing process. So in this first round, as Mr. Livingston said, focus on organizing language that is accessible and bringing us into the 21st century. And then, you know, maybe we look at some of you continuing on the next charter commission and other members joining us for some of the bigger things that I think need to be tackled. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Hi, everyone. Nora Nigelski-Eichner, 7 Outer Road, at-large council member. And I want to echo my colleagues first and really thanking you for service on this incredibly important commission. I think it is really hard to overstate just how much of an impediment this charter really is to us becoming the city, the modern city that we need and want to be. And I won't belabor that point, but I certainly do want to start from the premise of my colleagues, council member Livingston and Smith, that the most important thing to achieve here is the modernization, full stop. I've spent some time looking through Attorney Mednick's excellent start at reorganization and noting the incredible number of places where things need to be addressed, small and large. And I really certainly concur that that is the primary objective that has to be achieved for the larger issues to be tackled. And I certainly want to, in particular, also suggest that getting rid of the extraneous positions, getting rid of the job descriptions. These are all basic things that really are necessary to the modernization, and I hope they're sort of seen as part of that and messaged as part of that need. We really need to allow our city the flexibility to operate that is, you know, 21st century. And lots of, holding on to the past just is not going to serve us well there. The larger kind of philosophical framework that I want to, personally, that I want to encourage you to think about is stepping back a little bit and trying to imagine this charter, this structure, these positions without the individuals who currently fill these roles. I think it is very easy to, and sometimes the public has made the mistake of sort of personalizing some of this structure here. And I think that instead, we really need to think about what structures serve us well in the 21st century without personalities, without the assumption of a particular person's job skills or trainings. And to then think about how we balance the various functions, particularly the executive and the legislative. We have been very blessed in the last eight years to have an extremely competent administrator who has literally four-plus decades of public service under his belt. And it has been really, I think, beneficial to have the mayor, in this particular instance, have an enormous amount of authority over the city's finances. That is not necessarily the way it will play out in the future. And I think a rebalancing of the authority between the legislature and the mayor when it comes to the city's finances is crucial. We have a tremendously limited set of authority over the city's financials as a council member. The sole thing we can do for the operating budget is to set the cap. And that really does not allow us to put forward the needs we're hearing from our constituents. It does not allow us the flexibility to respectfully disagree with the mayor and highlight areas where we think adjustments need to be made. And so, you know, within the rethinking and modernization of the charter, I think there is still plenty of room to consider some, at least, of those initial rebalancing questions. And one particular recommendation that I would make, and again, while I very much don't want specific positions put in the charter, I do think it's important for the charter to acknowledge the authority of the council to hire their own staff. We have our most important financial obligation is to oversee the city's finances and make sure that everything is operating as it should. That's very difficult to do independently when we have no independent financial staff. So, you know, with that caveat of not being specific, I still think it's a crucial power that I would really like to see the council have. Finally, well, actually, sorry, second to final, I also want to echo Mr. Levine. I think it is very important that we do consider the police commission. That's something that has come up from the community consistently for years. And given the, I think, enormous number of people who have spoken on that, that again, is the kind of change where there is a fairly small adjustment could really meet community needs and answer community concerns. And the final point that I will make is that I think, as people have referred to earlier, there is an enormous number of larger, really enormous structural questions that are on the table that community members have raised. And I want to acknowledge that we have heard them. That doesn't mean that we think that it is sort of logistically possible to address them in the nine months that this commission has and to address them before the sort of reorganization has happened. But I do think it is really important to say that folks' voices have been heard when people express concerns about the bigger structural questions. And if this commission chooses not to reach them because you have more urgent matters, I think it's really helpful for this commission to acknowledge that that does not mean that those concerns are not valid or that they have not been, will not be considered in the future. So again, thank you so much for your service, and we really, I really look forward to sort of further communications as we all move forward in the process.
Could I ask you a question? Do you have a list of those concerns that have been articulated that you would want to pass on to us?
I would certainly would be happy to do so. I can mention things that I certainly that came up in the last charter revision. The enormous question of whether we switch to a manager and council structure, for instance, is one that I know was bandied about quite a lot in the previous. Questions about how we are sort of organized as a city, you know, is it functional to have all of the various structures that we have in place? Do we need a Board of Estimate and Taxation, for instance? There are plenty of cities that don't have one. And I want to be very clear, that is no knock on the people who currently serve on it, but it is the kind of structural question that has been raised, that has implications that are complex enough that I doubt we want to pull them through in this charter until other issues have been resolved. But those kinds of very large, is this the right structure for a city that's growing? Do we resemble the way that other cities of our size are operating? Or are we stuck in a structure that resembles much more a sort of New England 19th century, early 20th century structure that is not currently serving us as a, as a city?
Thank you.
Jen McMurdo, do you want to speak as well?
Thank you. Sorry for my tardiness. I, you know, don't know what has been said thus far, and I apologize for that. But I know a couple of things that have been brought up in our conversations leading up into this commission are a few things. One, and I don't want this to come off as self-serving by any means, but there has been some question about equity with the council and the time that is put into both this committee and also the Board of Ed. How much time these people put into this? And I've always gone on the record and said I am not a politician. I don't even know if I'll be sitting in this seat, you know, past this term, so this is not self-serving for me. But we have a lot of parents who serve on the council and the BOE currently. And the BOE doesn't make any money. It is a pure volunteer position, and I know they put in a lot of time and effort into that. The council, we get paid about $46 a month. I don't know if that's common knowledge or not. It is something, but it is definitely not equitable in the sense that it encourages people who, you know, work full-time, are parents who need to be home with their small children or pay for childcare. It does not cover those costs. So I know that there are other municipalities within the state that pay a larger sum. I don't think we should be paid a ton of money. But I do think that it would encourage a wider breadth of people to run for these offices and encourage people who otherwise may not be able to financially. And I think that would definitely make it more equitable. The other thing that I think is a little interesting is the fact that, you know, the Board of Ed serves a four-year term while the mayor and council serve a two-year term. I just think it's something that should be the same across the board. I don't have, you know, a personal opinion about what that looks like, whether it's changing the council and the mayor to four years or changing the BOE to two years. But I do think that that's something that the commission may want to look at. And I'm just looking forward to continuing the conversation. So I appreciate the time to talk, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Josh Goldstein, 19 Day Street in South Morwalk, an at-large council member. I do want to join my colleagues in saying that for a long time, we've been debating essentially whether through the ballot box in elections or just sort of between ourselves, whether Norwalk is a town or a city. It is clear now, as Norwalk nears a population of nearly 100,000 people, that Norwalk is a city, and it needs to have a charter that reflects that it is a city. It's a vibrant city. And in my humble and very unbiased opinion, it's the best city in the state of Connecticut. We need a charter that reflects that, both that's easy to understand and that people who aren't lawyers, and I realize I'm saying this even though I am a lawyer, but with the understanding that anyone, any citizen of Norwalk should be able to read our charter and understand what our government does and how it functions. Sometimes the opaqueness of our government is something times can be viewed or understood as sort of a shield, a way to say, oh, that progress can't happen because government is opaque. It is important that a document like the charter help to break this down and show that government is by and for the people because it can be understood by the people. So that's another way of saying, as Tom said, one, two, and three, let's modernize this thing and make it so that frankly, people can understand it. I want to echo some of what my colleague said. I wholeheartedly agree that an expansion of the police commission is warranted. There's been advocacy on this for years. This is a, as my colleague Nora Nigelski-Eichner just said, it's a relatively small adjustment that could result in good policy across the board. I think it is a warranted step. I also believe that we do need to think about structure of government concerns. As Nora just said, you know, it is, these documents are about the future. They're not actually about the present. It is about understanding that while we have an incredibly capable mayor, that may not always happen. Or even if it's not even a credible mayor, you have a, you have a council that maybe acts not as prudently as I'd like to think we do. And so it's important to make sure that our document sort of handles those various contingencies. I also think that there are a number of what we would call bigger issues or more controversial issues that stem from this. I don't really feel the need to go into them, but I do think that it's important for the commission to note as you've been going through this project, sort of what those issues are, how you work through them. And maybe if you have suggestions or things to think about down the road, I think that your exploration of these issues and sort of, as, as my teachers in school would say, show the work could be of great. Could be of great benefits to the community as we begin to move the ball. I realize that we're not going to get. Everything out of one charter commission review. But I think that showing that you've weighed these issues as you have, you know, and, and will continue to do will help. You know, move progress or as Max Faber said, the slow boring of hard boards. Which is why I should also have said at the beginning, but I'll say it now that. I'm deeply appreciative of the commission's service. I know that there are people who served. On the commission that existed four years ago, particularly my friend and former zoning commission colleague, Mike Witherspoon. And I think that that experience will be invaluable in making sure that this is a successful charter review commission. I also, I think that. I agree with what my colleague said about council being able to hire its own staff. Cities like New Haven, which are about to be very comparable cities to Norwalk, have that ability. I don't see why we wouldn't. And I agree with my colleague Jen McMur about terms being the same across the board. I think that's just good policy and frankly, I think we should do as much as we can to not confuse the electorate. And the shifting terms can do that and, and, and. I want to touch on, oh, and also. If there are positions that are extraneous, dog catchers or any of the ones that John just came up with. I do think they should be eliminated as well, except for, you know, Corchester or whatever, you can do that. I want to talk about the pay thing last, and I want to frame this in a slightly different term. I'm very lucky to be a thirty-two-year-old, single, white man with a lot of privilege and the ability. And frankly, the, the resource to be able to take on as large a commitment as common council while also having a full-time job. There are many people in, who are similar age but don't have the same conditions or will have childcare issues. Or who would like to serve and provide an enormously valuable voice to this city. Who feel that the lack of pay to cover basic expenses such as childcare is a, quite simply, a barrier to entry. Norwalk in living its values should be about openness. The willingness to, to preserve and expand opportunity. And to make sure that people from all different walks of life across this city have a real and valid opportunity to serve this city. Because we need them. We need them to show up here. We need them to provide our perspective. We, I'm very. Happy with the, with the council we have and that we come from diverse perspectives and frankly, it makes us better. When we think about our charter and, and, and issues such as compensation, it is not self-serving. It's actually about expanding opportunity and giving us the, us being the city of Norwalk, the best possible chance to ensure our future success. For generations to come. It's why we're all here. It's why we do this. And it's why, you know, we all believe in this idea and this project of Norwalk and that's why you're here and that's what I think. Issues like, issues like this that may seem self-serving, actually it is about us investing in our future success. So with that, I deeply appreciate your work and your service to this commission and I hope that we can be a resource. To you throughout this process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nicole Ayers?
And I'm still having trouble on meeting. I do apologize for my delay. Thank you for taking this time to meet with the elected officials of the city of Norwalk. I will try to be very succinct. I think my colleagues that have. Gone before me have. Said many of the things that I want, have wanted to say, and that's really because we have taken a lot of time to discuss and debate. And really try to understand the charter, charter division, charter revision. In the manner of we have to serve the people, so we need to understand what this document is saying and doing. Two things that I do want to highlight, and the reason why I'm highlighting them is. Not because I don't think that you did not hear my other colleagues when they said it, but there's, there are just two issues that I think are just. Very important and need to be addressed. The first issue is the fact that the common council under the current charter doesn't have the ability to have staff. There is so much that this current sitting council needs to do, wants to do, and is trying to do it. But it is slowed down by the fact of we not, we are not able to have a staff person. To facilitate some of the day-to-day basic things that we need done. How we are currently functioning is working, but it's not the best efficient way to work. And so as we continue to develop as a city, we should always be looking on how to be efficient. And so I think the council having the ability and, and being empowered. To hire someone that will help them govern is, is smart legislation and it is where we need to go as a city. And secondly. I see this and I have shared this with my colleagues as a human service, a human. Service issue, a, a social justice issue. I am a mother, a single mother of two children. One is an elementary school in our city and one is a disability. I am fortunate enough that I do have family support that assists me. And, and covers my children, but I believe that I am a trailblazer and I set a path. For people who are going to come behind me. And the fact that our governing document does not. Make provisions for me to take care of my children, but rather it becomes a hindrance. I, I think it's a humorous service rights. That's just my personal, my personal opinion. As a mother. If I was just to leave my child and go to City Hall, even though I'm doing the good work, that would be shamed upon. That would be looked down upon because I'm neglecting. My household, but let's be reasonable. Let's come into twenty twenty. How? Is, how are we expected, I should say, to do this work if there is not a level of support? To be able to do this work. Part of government is obviously serving, but part of government is removing barriers. We are our best selves when everybody comes to the table equally. This current document does not allow us to be equal. This current, current document keeps a separation from what I see between women and men or child. Care and non-childcare, people with children, people without children. And so I would urge. This August body to please really look at a way that we could be more. Inclusive of all family types, so that we are really getting a representative government. And that we are allowed, we are allowing people to show up at their best, as their best selves, not having to worry about. Overhead really and, and how. And how they're going to juggle just so that they are allowing themselves to serve. Yes, we do get forty-six dollars. You all live in this city, I'm assuming. What does forty-six dollars cover? Doesn't cover an hour of childcare, doesn't even cover thirty minutes of childcare. Doesn't cover gas, doesn't cover our electric bills or anything of that nature. So when we currently allow documentation of legislation. To say this is what the worth of the service is, what does that say about the service we are expecting from people? So those are just two things I, I, I would ask this body to think about. And I would say not only for the council, but also for the BOE. They should have some allotment for the same, they have the same issues we have. They go to the same amount of meetings we do. And so I think it should be done across the board. I do not want to take your time. I do want to get out the way to let some of my other colleagues. And the Board of Ed members that have not had an opportunity to address this body to address, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
So one member of the public that's on that wanted to speak. Diane?
Thank you. I, I was, thought I would wait till the end, but I just wanted to, again.
Diane, please identify yourself.
I'm sorry. Yes, Diane Loricella, Twenty-One Little Fox Lane. I just wanted to add some thoughts. I do appreciate many of the discussion of many of the common council. I do want to though, suggest to, to the Charter Revision Commission. That while indeed, and having Mr. Mednick helping with this will help with the organizational. Part, I know the public, I'm assuming will have to vote on that. I, I really actually don't know. At some point, I'm sure you'll discuss whether merely organizing the, the different. Articles is cause for public to vote on it during an election, an, an election day. Not sure about that. I think so. However, I, I really feel that. Because the council had a chance five years, six years ago, four years ago, and so narrowly. Concentrated on what they concentrated on, which was ill-advised. I, I just don't feel it's fair now that this charter commission is wisely accepting. Regular publics like myself. That shouldn't, our concern should not be thrown out. So I caution you to only look at. The administrative parts of this, which is very important as well. There are some overriding issues. I very much. Agree with the police commission issue. However, I would like you to please, please check on adding. A citizen police advisory commission. That is very controversial and I do not feel adding two more members to the police commission. No matter who is the one that gets them on there or appoints them is going to reduce the citizens' need. To take an, even with limitations, exploration into issues that are encountered. By the police and the police commission. So please consider. A citizen advisory committee related to police matters. Many cities across the country have them. And they operate well when they are written up well. So please, Mr. Mednick, please give this fine commission a chance with that. I do think the pay should be increased. But in doing so, please make the case to the public. So that it does not, so that there's a chance that it could be voted. In the affirmative, because there were not very good cases and education. Made by the, our previous charter revision commission. So many of the good, the few good ideas, they did see the light of day. They, they fell, they failed because there was not a very good educational experience by the public. And lastly, I just wanted to say, when it comes to the budget. I would like to somehow assure, even if it's later with an ordinance, that there's public access. By people who care and are interested in the line-by-line initial department requests. It is very hard for the public. To access the budget. So the Board of Estimate doesn't make an effort to have any sort of educational discussion. I tried it with Fred Wills when he was Chair of Board of Estimate. I think Mr. Camacho and others should consider making the process of budgeting a lot more. The Board of Estimate and the Planning and Zoning Commissions possibly should be elected positions that should be looked at. And I lastly just wanted to say that allowing the public to view the current code and charter is very difficult. I beseech you, make, make sure there is a link with a box on the homepage of our city website. Which is wanton for reform yet again, but at least for this important product, process. It was not easy and I am. I, as some of you know, I do my homework and it wasn't easy to access the current code that you're looking at. So could you please make it easier for the general public and make sure it's in both English and Spanish and Haitian? So that we can have access and help you with suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Yes.
For the record, not to engage in debate, but any action that is taken by the commission. If the council approves their actions will be subject to approval by the public. Even if it's simply a reorganization, and I doubt very much that's all that's going to happen. But the reorganization that you're looking at is simply an editorial. Reorganization that I've made to help facilitate the process. But if that's all they did. That would go to the council and if the council approved it, it would go on the ballot. So I just want everybody to understand that any action that comes out of the commission and approved by the council. Will be approved by, will be subject to action by the public.
Jordan, are there any other people wanting on the list?
Any other members of the public remote? Colin Hoston?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Colin Hoston, Twenty-Eight Duck Road, current Chair of the Board of Education. I really appreciate this opportunity, this, this entire process that we as a community get to, to, to take a deep dive into our charter. I think my colleagues in the council have made some really great points about the equity of service that we, you know. Need to confront when we ask people to serve in these positions. I wanted to just make one point about. How, how our charter. Prescribes the funding of the city of Norwalk. And I want us to, to address something that comes up every year when we pass an operating budget. A, a, a bulk of which is, is earmarked to fund our public schools. We all agree, I think, on the board, on the council, on the Board of Estimates and Taxations and, and throughout the community. That this is an important public service. I think where we find ourselves disagreeing is on how the process of, of. Creating and approving those budgets happens. I think the current process is flawed. If only in the timelines set out by the charter, which sometimes creates what feels like a very truncated time for. Folks to discuss and understand the budget before being required to vote on it. And sometimes it, it does, I would say, pronounce. A different. Perceptions of power and priorities between the Board of Education and the Common Council. Every year we run into similar issues with. Some folks feeling that the schools are not funded enough and some folks feeling that. The, the schools are, are, you know, some of the school funding is, is misappropriated. And so, you know, I think that, you know, there's many different levels that can be taken to address some of this. And I agree with, I think, what Tom Livingston and Barbara Smith said, which is that this, this particular process. This particular iteration of the process may not be the time to go to level ten. That said, I think that there are, I, I would, I would encourage the members of this commission. To consider how that process can be both streamlined and improved. Both for the elected officials engaging it and for, of course, the members of the community whom we serve. Again, I appreciate your efforts in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that's remote?
Yes, hi. Troy Geller at the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Fifth year there. Just wanted to echo the comments. Thanks to the commission for starting this process. It's a heavy lift and we appreciate your efforts. Couple of things I just said is, Norwalk now is one of the top five. I think maybe, maybe even better cities in the state as far as population. And maybe if we look to some of the other cities in our population range, we could look at best practices of how they. So we don't have to recreate the wheel here. Best practices of how they set up their cities. And start with that process and maybe take a look and tweak ours. Some of the things that have confused me on the Board of Estimate is the taxing districts. The non-uniformity throughout the city, when you have six taxing districts, everyone's not taxed the same, everyone has different services. And then also I think it's been mentioned already, the budget approval process. I know the common council sets the cap and I know we go through, Chairman Ed Camacho and our group. Go through each one of the heads of each department and review their numbers, but it seems cumbersome. And that's something, once again, maybe we look at best practices of other cities of our size. That would help, but. Once again, I, I thank you for your efforts and we look forward to working for the city, so.
I'd like to make one brief comment if I can.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. So this is Ed Camacho, chairman of the Board of Estimate and Taxation. I just wanted to respond to a couple of. Of, of items that came up, not that anyone specifically has suggested this, but the suggestion is that we should. Consider that you guys should consider changing our government to a manager city council. Type of situation as well as doing away with the BET. And presumably then concentrating quite a bit of authority in the common council. I, I think that that would be ill-advised. I think that. It's important for there to be a system of checks and balances. I think the mayor is a political. Position and it's, and it's voted on by the city at large. The common council, you know, has. Some of its members are, are elected by the city at large and, and others by the districts and so that. Seems appropriate as well. The BET, although the members of the BET are. Nominated by the mayor, the city council has to approve, but in addition to that, the charter. Requires that the BET be diverse politically. And so I think that the BET serves as a check and a balance. Both with respect to the mayor's office and the city council's office, and I think it serves an important function. Is, is required to be diverse politically. Both the city council and the mayor have a say in who it comprises and, but nevertheless. There is a, a separate role to play for the BET. And so I think that the notion that we should switch to a manager city council. Situation and do away with the BET seems to be an extraordinary concentration of authority. With the city council, which I think would be ill-advised.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else looking to speak? Seeing none.
Are there any members of the commission that would like to address or ask any questions relative to? These presentations or further edification? Hearing none and seeing none, it's zoom thing, we have to do it two ways, right? Okay, then a motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
A motion to public hearing.
Thank you. Who, who is that, that second?
Me, Michael.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none and seeing none, we can go vote for closing the public hearing. And we want to thank you all that came and I apologize again for my mistake in being late. And I'm going to make sure I get everybody's comments and study them tomorrow, so that I'm on board with everyone else. All those in favor in closing the hearing?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we're then going to move on. To. Getting a little more instructions from council and, and hitting us up and then. Getting to work here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's nice to meet you. Nice to be in the room with the, the two members who are in the room tonight. And, and everybody else.
I don't want to interrupt, but I'm going to. Can I ask a question before you start? Comment and a question. I've spoke to a lot of people in the last three to four weeks about. What they know about the charter, what they think the charter should be, how the charter should be organized, this, that, and the other. Some are unclear what the difference is between 2016. And this, this commission, including myself to a certain extent. But I've also had some discussions with them about ideas about what we could and could not do with this charter. And several of the things that I mentioned that I thought we could do, I was told. Point blank, no, you can't do that. That's state level only and you can't do that. If it is state level, then if there's certain things that we want to do. Like term limits or whether we want to redistrict, draw new lines, this sort of thing, present it to the people. You know, what's the process for that and so on and so forth. So I said, Stephen, you're doing an excellent job. That's, that's awesome. I just think a little clarity for those who. Don't know a lot about what we're here for, what we're doing and. You know, I've lived here for 20 years. I didn't know anything went on in 2016. So I, I just kind of related it to myself. So anyway, I, I think that that would help.
Happy, happy to do so as we go through. So I'll look at 2016. I haven't studied 2016 because. I tend to look forward, but it'll be interesting to see what, what issues came up. In 2016, but I think one of the things that was clear this evening is the council really wants to look at. Kind of the organizational structure of the document and make sure that we have a document that is readable and that's usable going forward. There are issues and you raised one of them, term limits, for example. Term limits are not. As I said in my initial presentation to the commission several weeks ago. We can only engage in activities upon which we have an express grant of authority from the state of Connecticut. So if you take a look and what I'll do, maybe for the next meeting, I'll be happy to do this. I'll give you a, a list of all the items that local governments can engage in and can do.
Okay.
You will not see term limits there. You won't see recall there. In fact, there's a Supreme Court case, I think I mentioned that. I argued when I was. A little boy, I was about 27, when I argued the case of the Supreme Court. That knocked out term, knocked out recall, it's the same argument that would be used if you put term limits in. But just about everything else that you can do in terms of the operation of government is permissible. There's an awful lot. That can be contained in a charter. And one of the things that we're going to have to be very careful about as we go through the charter. Is not to eliminate any special act provisions as archaic as they may be, most of them are. There may be some that I will talk to the corporation council about and the mayor and others to make sure we don't give up. Power that is unique to Norwalk. And I can't tell you what all those are at this point. But those are the things that when we're conducting the surgery, we just don't want to throw everything out. As we go through chapter by chapter, we need to decide, are there things as archaic as they may seem? That are useful because it's something that other communities don't have, because we still have these special acts. So I will try to guide you and make sure as we go through that we will. Not be doing things that are, that are inappropriate or illegal. We want to make sure that we have a charter that. Is, is, is a really strong and good charter and I think we have an opportunity to create a really good model here. The other thing that I wanted to point out briefly, and thank you for raising the question, it's a good question. Especially in the context of some of the testimony we received. There may be things in the charter, one of the things I heard this evening was. People are concerned about some positions that are in the charter. Others are concerned about restrictive job descriptions that are in the charter. And, and so my general recommendation to, to councils and to commissions. In dealing with this issue is to try to move some of those things out of the charter and into the code of ordinances. And what you do in the charter is you establish a constitutional standard. You don't establish the job description for a police chief. I'm not sure it's in your charter, but it's in a lot of charters or the public works director. You establish the position. You say there shall be a department head for a department such as a public works department. But you also establish a best practice standard so that your personnel or human resources department has to establish. Job descriptions, maybe subject to approval by the legislative body, that are consistent with best practices in the field. And when you establish a provision in, in 2022 or 2023 as we will do. At this commission process, it doesn't necessarily mean it's state of the art in 2033 or 2027. And so you'll see very often in my charters, I recommend. That on job descriptions, you look at them every five years or when somebody leaves the position. So you constantly modernize and look at them. There are some minimal qualifications you may want to put in there. That's fine. But to really constrict the, the, the job description is something that should be done in real time by an ordinance, by a regulation. Involving the mayor and the council. So we will have plenty of time to go through all those things.
Good.
As part of your response, you mentioned term limits and you're not. You're not speaking to the point that was raised several times here tonight, that, that the mayor is elected for two years and, and the board of that is for four.
I didn't address that issue.
Yeah, no, but I wanted to make it clear that that is not what you were talking about when you say term limits.
Oh, no, no, not at all. Those are the terms of office. A term limit would be the mayor can run for a two-year term only twice. Or only three times.
And another point I thought that was loud and clear this evening is, is the experience that you were bringing to us. From working with other municipalities of our size or in the top 10 in Connecticut.
I represent nine of the top 12 cities in the state.
I think that's important for the people in Norwalk to know that we have you with. With that experience at our avail and we sincerely will be using it, I'm sure.
And can I point out, Madam Chair, that one of the things I do. Is, for example, if we could look at the budget, I've brought an example of. Of one of, one of the things I prepare for my commissions. This is on. Taking your budget provision, which kind of breaks down, breaks down all the provisions in the charter. As reorganized in the edited version of the charter, not as in your charter. Yeah, it suggested the organization, suggested structure and has all the provisions that are in your governing documents, including. The code of ordinances, because your capital budget is not in the charter, it's in the code of ordinances. And then what it does is it, it analyzes. All the elements of a budget process from any prefacatory provisions, like the fiscal year is such and such. The budget process is an open process, running through the budget estimates, submission, public hearings and all those things. And you will be able to compare yourself to towns, cities that are comparable in size to you. So you'll see what you have that they don't have, what they have that you don't have. And so it, it allows you to help. Help you make an informed judgment. At the same time, it allows members of the council who are going to be paying attention to this process and the mayor. To look at it as well in the finance department, so that you end up with the best possible product. So most of my work is really comparable. Data between the communities.
Are there any other commissioners that have a question or comment? See any. Activity on, on Zoom.
Let me make the points I was going to make a few moments ago. Thank you. And there was great questions and I'm here to answer them. So that's my job. At the next meeting and we are, I think where the disconnect was, I think that most of our meetings are going to start at 6:30, starting at our next meeting. Because this was a public hearing. I think that's why it started at 6:00 if I'm not mistaken, but I think we are moving to 6:30. And I believe at the next meeting, we're going to be hearing from Evergreen Solutions on their efficiency study and, and I think everybody should. Does everybody have that on the commission? Has everybody been sent a copy of that? We should make sure that everybody gets a copy of the efficiency study. I also asked the corporation council, who's not here tonight. To see if he can make the next meeting to discuss what I call the bumps in the road. What are the things? That he definitely does not want to see in a revised charter from a legal perspective that have posed legal issues to the corporation council's office. And so I think those are the two principal items.
You've asked him, but you haven't confirmed.
I haven't confirmed. It'll either be at that meeting or the meeting after. He will let me know by the end of this week. Whether he can make it this, maybe next Wednesday. Stephen, will we get a copy of this?
Study that was done?
Evergreen.
Yes. Can we also get like a Cliff Notes version along with that from what happened after that was presented to council in that particular meeting? Like what was, what was moved on? Because there was a lot of things suggested in that study that. I have to think when I watched it all, that was pretty well done. But I've seen several of those things and I compared it to others that I've been a part of. But there was never anything that I saw that was a follow-up to it. Okay, these are the things that. Council decided to move on, wanted to change, do this, implement, that sort of thing.
I'll ask the council president to see if there's a list of things that they've done. But one of the things that they are doing is they created this commission so we could take a look at some of the structural issues that they raised. So in effect, your creation is partially a response to the Evergreen study, but I'll ask them more specifically. And I have nothing else to, to add except to say this to the members of the public. As the chair said, and, and commissioner said, a lot of members of the public don't really. Understand the process because this is a unique process. You don't do it every year. And one of the things I, I know that the, that the chair is dedicated to is public. Participation and I don't think that we're going to simply have one public hearing or two public hearings. I think that the public will have opportunities. Throughout this process to speak out, to listen to what the commission is doing. And one of the things as we start. After the next meeting, you know, and I strongly recommend members of the public to send their cards and letters in so that. Through the email system to make sure that the commissioners understand what their priorities are. Because a couple of meetings from now, we will be sitting trying to organize the schedule. Because it seems like a lot of time between now and May, and I assure you with holidays, with the holidays coming up. January is just around the corner and January becomes a scary month when you take a look at it in the context of May. A few months after and we have some heavy drafting to do. And so. So in a couple of meetings, we're going to start looking at scheduling substantive issues that we're going to have to look at. And what will, what will be part of that is we will have panel discussions. We will, I will recommend. And my commissions usually accept that we have local people open it up. We're discussing the budget, for example. You want to have the finance folks there. You want to have the mayor there, the council leadership there. Board of estimate to discuss how the process works currently, what their thoughts are about the process. A second meeting normally has a variety of officials from like-sized communities. That are finance officials, could be legislators, legislators or mayors. The way I met Tom Livingston is I invited him to speak at one of my panel discussions because of the structure of the council. On a council issue in another community. So I have a lot of those types of people and then by the third meeting. We hopefully have a framework for discussion.
And that's, yeah, that's, I think the commissioners are anxious to, how do we get into the meat of this?
So every one of the issues that we look at will go through that process and. And I'm probably going to recommend, just to give you a preview, that we do it on a chapter by chapter basis. Maybe not to start with chapter one. We may start with chapter 10. I think that starting with the budget would be a very interesting place to start because it's tangible. Everybody knows it and it would be a significant first step if in the months of November, December. You're able to look at the budget process and, and come to some kind of significant changes. So.
There, there is value to that schedule also because we're entering into the budget season. And, and we're, we'll be experiencing it. The public can learn things and maybe participate more.
I think would help them in the current process. Yeah. So that's why I usually start and I think it's a good learning. Exercise for the commission and then, then you go back to the beginning of the charter and try to march through it for the rest of the six months.
Really pivots around that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else from the commissioners? Any questions? I hope you all have read through the charter again and then the draft. Suggestions of getting us. Getting all of the items in one location so that we can address them in a sensible manner instead of jumping around from section to section. So that's going to be very helpful. So we will meet again in two weeks. And we will have Evergreen here to educate us. Yes, on the second, the first, and we're now in the first and the third. We've jumped around in order to accommodate holidays and people's. We jumped around in order to accommodate holidays and people's schedules. But now we're going to try to, and we're going to be at six o'clock.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay. Six thirty, first and third Wednesday of the month going forward.
So the next meeting is the second of November. All right?
That is correct.
Yes.
Week from tonight.
That's. Well, a motion to adjourn is in order. Someone from the commission, please.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second, who is that?
Mike.
Michael for this one.
Okay, thank you. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries, then we are officially adjourned until November 2nd.
Have a good night. Thank you all. Have a good night.